I'm going to call this meeting to order for the Board of Trustees with the Village of Cambridge. Our meeting of Tuesday, March 26, 2024. Roll call, please.
Trustee Brennan.
Here.
Franklin Whitwer.
Here.
Hollenbeck.
Yep.
Chris Blackwood.
Here.
McNally.
Here. If we can stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Proof of posting, Lisa?
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, Badger Bank, and the Village website.
All right. Okay, we are going to move on to public comment. Is there anybody that would like to come up and speak? We'd be happy to have you.
Take your time.
Good thing I'm watching, that makes it fun. I'm Pamela Schmidt. I live at 343 Waverly. And before that, I've lived in Cambridge since '05. Before that, I lived in the Woodhaven neighborhood. And I'm here today because earlier today I listened in on the water commission thing. And I have some concerns that that big increase happened and I get the emails, but I didn't, admittedly skim them. But so, the judges, I was wondering, I'm here to learn, but I'm wondering also if the board knew anything about that or were involved or like had comments about it.
Well, we are going to be talking about that later. We really are not allowed to have a back and forth with you. So our job at this point in the meeting is to listen to you. If you had some concerns, give people between two and three minutes to articulate those concerns.
Okay.
Otherwise, we will be talking about this later on today or tonight.
Right, my concern was, my concerns are that it seems like an excessive amount. How much, like, why weren't we, how did all the timeline of it? Sorry, I have some notes on that notice thing. That is somewhere. Obviously, I was well prepared. Thank you for being with me. I don't know if someone else wants to be. Um, I feel like I figured the notice is public and I understood it was posted in a few different spots, and thank you for that. But I wish earlier in the process we held up and notified the results or what we're looking at. And I was wondering why we weren't notified when this was being decided about the application? Because I think the 60% percent is burdensome for me and for a lot of others. I'm also, I have a question. Do we have three wells? Because I heard well number three, let's start about on the meeting earlier. And I know we have, I thought two, but I didn't know about the third.
Well, number one's decommissioned.
Okay, which way is that?
So we have two wells. We have two wells, well number two, and they're building well number three right now.
Okay. Sorry, I've here need to, it's gonna suck slow and loud for me. And also, when will the website be updated?
That'll also be on the agenda.
We'll get to that later. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You are very welcome. Thank you for being patient with me.
Okay, no problem, Pamela. Is there anybody else? Sir, come on up.
Hello, everyone. My name's Zach Polium. I live at 706 Townsend Street. Lived in Cambridge almost four years. I'm not here to question you. Like you said, you want to hear our concerns. We have two to three minutes. I do have a lot of questions. I don't know when I can get those answered outside of this meeting. But I'm really concerned of how we operate it with this well. And securing this loan over the years, you know, I came to find out about this over the news. Never received that letter in the mail, so I am requesting a mailing list, making sure my address was on there. I think the short notice, the web comments, I believe, opened up February 1st for the PSC. I believe a lot of residents received that letter last week. Like I said, I haven't even received it. Looking, how I found out was by a news website. Now, there's information on there, statements on there, and I'm really here to, I want to clear the air and I really want to find out when this started. The news article says 20 years today in the PSC questionnaire, whatever you want to call it, the open talk. It was said 15 years. And then it was said that we've been discussing this well for the last four years in the Village Board meetings. So I'm really here to let you guys know that it's almost neglect or negligent on your part for that long when this has to deal with health and safety of our residents' water. You say one well is decommissioned, and we have a third well, but from the news article, it says the third well is non-operational. And I'm sorry, Lisa, but the news article does say non-operational. So I'm here to figure out what's going on with the wells. Because I've only been here four years. If this started discussions the last four years, I really wasn't concerned about coming to Village Board meetings, and then this happened, so now I'm concerned. And I'm a concerned resident. I'm speaking up for other residents that are concerned. A lot of people are intimidated and they don't want to come to things like this. They can't make things like this. You know, there was comments made about using the third well when it's non-operational, but when the second well is not working, you have to use the third well, and it's not fully treated. So what water are our residents getting? So just some concerns I have. I'd like some of those addressed. I can meet with any one of you outside of this meeting to answer more questions. When you get to the part that you're going to discuss tonight about the well, are we going to have more time to speak about other concerns?
There may very well be. We're going to be talking about the financing of the well.
Okay, the financing?
Yes.
Okay, well, then I guess I'll just ask right now, was there any outside businesses or anything that impacted? Or you say capacity and is the reason for upgrading this well. What's the major factor in needing to update this? I know they say the DNR is mandating you to do it, but I can't find that information anywhere. I can't find that paperwork anywhere. I haven't been, today they couldn't find it. So just, those are concerns for me because it's like, what's going on? You know, and I'm a truthful person, and at my job, things like this, it doesn't happen this way. It just doesn't, you know, and that's the way I would like all of you to treat it, you know. So I hear from other residents about the Dancing Goat, and I'm going to bring it up. Because they pump out mass volumes or take mass volumes of water from us. Is that true? They take water from the village?
I can't get into give and take here, sir.
They are, they do get their water, yes, they are a customer of the Village Water System.
Okay. On average, on average, a whiskey distillery uses about 37 liters of water for one liter of spirits. If you look at how many barrels they're producing a year, that's about 2,000 barrels. That comes about, to about 14 million gallons of water. So I'm just concerned that that might have an issue with the capacity and needing more, to have another well. And if that's the case, I don't know why we haven't gone back to them and asked them to put in filtration system, to look at other ways to re-filter their water and use water differently. I mean, help the environment, you know. So, just some concerns I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Okay, there's one special guest, Sheriff Calvin Barrett. Thank you for making it down this evening. Sheriff Barrett is our Dane County Sheriff, and he has been invited in to give us an update as far as law enforcement and how it affects Cambridge and Dane County.
Yeah, well, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to be here and speak. I think this may be the second or the third time that I've been here, but do see some new faces. It's a pleasure to meet you and nothing but the utmost respect for each and every one of you who have taken this leadership position and have gone to be the voice of the people here. There's nothing greater than that, and I thank each and every one of you. I'm here just to talk and provide information in regards to our sheriff's office, answer questions for you. I believe I did send emails out to each and every one of you with information and data. I have an education background. I'm an academic at heart. And so, understanding and sharing information is very important to me. So that's why I provided you with some of the documents that I have here, paper copies that I could leave here for the community. That talks about our jail consolidation project and what that looks like, but also the numbers and the data of our jail, how many people we book in, average length of stay, core values, things like that to our sheriff's office, as well as there's a program and social services guide. We have over 30 social services and programs that we provide for the residents within our facility. And so that's how we help rehabilitate and lower the crime rate through these programs to help individuals that are in our custody. Our core values are character, competence, compassion, courage, and communication. That is what drives every decision that we make as a sheriff's office on and off duty. And our mission statement is we are dedicated to building relationships and solving problems through evidence-based decision-making and procedural justice. Data is what drives us. Every decision we make is based off of data. You guys have a great group of deputies that are here that focus on the data and that put the resources towards where that data's at. And that's the expectation that we have from the top down for them. I do have just some documents that I can leave here as well. But I also wanted to talk about, you know, the typical crime trends that are going to be picking up as the weather starts to warm up. Obviously, you know a lot of the crime starts in the cities or the more populated parts of our community, and then they branch out to some of the smaller communities, not in a way that is predictable, but more in a random way. So vehicle break-ins, things like that. So I would encourage you and the community members to continue to keep your vehicles locked, continue to keep your garage door openers, if they're in your vehicles in the driveway, take those inside. Do those little things to make sure that you make it harder for individuals to commit crimes. A lot of the crimes that we see, especially in our rural areas, are crimes of opportunity. If you don't give them the opportunity, they move on to the next car. What they call it is car shopping. It's what teenagers do. They go up to a car, they pull on the door. If the door's locked, they go on to the next car. If the door's open, they go through it. If they go in it, open the garage door, garage door opens, no one comes, they go in the garage. They're in the garage, they go through those cars, and no one comes, door to the house is unlocked, they go in the house. And that's how it spirals into a vehicle break-in to a home invasion. Also, we're going to be putting out a press release tomorrow in regards to scammers. Technology is hurting us in many ways, though it's helping us. The AI that's out there, the scammers are now able to call from anywhere in the world with the phone numbers of your family members and friends with their actual voices and are able to communicate with you. We're typically seeing the, hey grandma, hey grandpa, I'm in trouble, you need to send money here, you need to do this. Our advice to that is, number one, lock down your social media, because that's where they're getting a lot of the information from. Make sure that it's private so that normal people from the community or from the outside can't see that. Number two, if you get that call, immediately hang up and then call your family member back. A lot of times you'll find out that they're actually okay. If they're not, then you can just continue the conversation as so. But remember, never to send any money to anyone, never provide any personal information. And a typical way that they get information is through their techniques of, hey grandma, it's your grandson. Or it's little me, or it's whatever, and then you say, Bobby, is that you? Well, now you just gave them the name. Yeah, it's me, Bobby. And that's how it spirals on with the scammer. So we are going to be putting out a press release on that for people to be aware. We'll continue to do our education and information outreach to the community to make sure that that doesn't happen. But those are the things that we're seeing. I looked at the crime stats and the data here. There's nothing at this point that would lead us to believe that we may need to increase, you know, undercover operatives or anything like that to find vehicle thefts. But that's just kind of the overview of where we're at. I'll take a few questions if you're available. All of you have my email address, so if there's anything that comes up, you can reach out to me. And I believe President McNally does have my cell phone number as well, if something does come up. Also, too, information in regards to filling the positions. I know there's been some vacancies here, but know that the two deputies who are going to be absolutely fantastic are going to be done around June 1st with their field training, and they'll be here and to get back into the schedule right away. I think you have Deputy Boyce and Deputy O'Donnell O'Connor.
Deputy Boyce actually started last week.
Did he really? Excellent. Excellent, excellent. So very good. Obviously, you've selected them. They're, you know, some of our best deputies that we have in there, and they're ready to serve the community. They're this batch of young, proactive, hungry, young deputies that are looking to serve. I believe that's what's the greatness of our sheriff's office, is many of our, all of our deputies start in the jail. So they learn how to communicate. They learn how to multitask. They learn how to deal with stressful situations. They have guidance. So by the time they get out to the community, they're already pretty much veteran officers and know how to apply what they do in the jail to the communities that are out here.
Okay. Questions? I had one for you.
Yes.
Sir, on the jail, how is that? Because that's, is that as large as what they had talked about trying to put up? And it got approved, correct? And we're off and going, and that's going to be done in 25? So if you can just kind of give us a Cliff Notes version on that one.
Absolutely. So, no, the jail, we currently, right now, we can house 1,013 jail residents. The jail, the tower that we're building is actually only going to be 825. It's smaller than what was originally designed at seven stories, 922 beds. We had studies come in that gave us jail population estimates up to 2045, and 922 beds was ideal. Obviously, COVID hit, money, value engineering, they took an entire floor off. So we are going, even if we were to open the facility today, we'd be at capacity. So there's some things that have to be done, because obviously we had a budget and we had to fit into that budget. So it will be a six-story tower, 825 beds, and the entire fourth floor will be medical and mental health housing. Currently, right now, we don't have medical or mental health. Everyone goes to solitary confinement. And if you've had anyone, friends or family members that have been in mental health crisis, the worst place you can put them is in a solitary confinement cell, worst. So with this new facility, it'll be safe, humane, rehabilitative. We broke ground actually on the 15th. It'll take about two and a half years. It will go in the back parking lot of our public safety building. And our ultimate goal is to close and leave the city-county building, which was built in the 1950s, and that's your typical Alcatraz-style bugs, bad smell, poor air quality jail that we're trying to get rid of. So if you haven't, I would suggest going on a jail tour. They're free Tuesdays and Saturdays. Take community members and family members to walk through. It was so bad, I actually had to close a portion of it where we were housing our females. It was that bad. We had to put stickers on the water facets in that area that said, run the water for two minutes before consuming. Absolutely atrocious and inhumane, in my opinion. So while we closed it, and we're moving towards a newer facility that'll be updated and be more of a podular-type style. And then the data, or more information on that is in those documents I sent you. But also, I have pictures and different things, the drawings of what the pods will look like compared to what we have now. And then there's a data sheet with our 2023 jail data, statistics, budget, resources, staffing, everything you need to know about our jail here.
Anything else? Okay, well, sir, thank you for coming by and giving us an update from Dane County.
All right, thank you so much. You guys have a great night.
Thank you for all the supporting documents, too. Love that.
Okay, there have been some people who have walked in. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time in open comments? All right, I'm going to close that portion of the meeting. So let's just move right on. Item four, approval of the consent agenda? All right, I'll second. Okay, we've got a motion of approval. Do we have any questions, issues, concerns, clarification? We're all right. Okay, everybody in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, carries. Moving to item six, reports. Just want to talk briefly. We had the League of Women Voters here. This was the Thursday after the last meeting. It was on the, oh, the 14th of March, in quite a turnout. Three school board candidates were here, and we had been approached by Lake Mills and the League of Women Voters there, and they wanted to have a forum. And so, you know, it worked out that we could offer up Amundson. There were over 100 people here that evening. I mean, it was, all three candidates said it was the biggest gathering that they had talked to. And it didn't allow for a give and take from the audience. There just wasn't enough time. There were questions that were prepared ahead of time, and all the candidates were given the five questions, and then they had a chance to answer those in front of the audience. And I thought it was very well done. Was there anybody here that evening? Okay. And it was very polite. There was no, you know, sparking of the wires between the audience and the candidates. So I thought that was quite well done. So that was something that...
It's on YouTube, so people want to watch it, it's on YouTube.
Was it? Yeah, it was filmed. I know we had a little problem with the microphones, and I was trying to... Pardon me?
Seven seconds. Right at the front of it?
Yeah.
After seven seconds, it's fine.
Okay, all right, good. Anyway, we had a very successful candidate forum, so. Any questions on that? Okay, move on. Library Board, March 13th.
So we met, we set the naming rights policy for the library. We've just been reviewing all of the policies, so we've done that. We looked, we started talking about the art display policy. We decided that on Saturday, yes, this Saturday, the Library Board will be having a special meeting to do nothing but do policies. Because all of our policies are either outdated or they were nonexistent. And if we do one per meeting, it'll take us forever to get through it. So we're going to have a three-hour meeting. I believe it's going to be here in the, I don't know if it's here or in the senior room, I think, one of the rooms. And we're going to spend three, I think, three and a half hours and just try and get through four or five policies at once, so we can get those all done. We approved our new trustee bylaws, and the 2023 annual report was talked about. And that's about it.
Okay. Questions for Paula?
How are the new hours working out?
Oh, the new hours are fantastic. The library is now open every day, or Monday through Thursday, from 10:00 in the morning until 7:00 at night. So all of you guys who work in Madison, you now have time to swing by the library and check out that book you want to read. On every, you don't have to wait till Thursdays. Now, you can do it Monday through Thursday. And then we are open on Fridays until 5:00. And then on Saturdays, we did extend, I believe, one extra hour on Saturday as well. So we're open until, from, I believe it's 10:00 until 2:00 on Saturday. So, your library. Go check out books. Excellent.
What is the, Paula, they had the membership cards for you to check on a book.
The library cards?
Yeah. What's the population? I mean, we have like 60% of the population that has a library card?
It was more than that. Yeah, I think it's more than that. I think, yeah, I don't remember what the percentage is. Jennifer, the president of the board, had said that, but I don't recall. I thought it was more like 70 or 80%. Yeah, it was like, it's a really high number of people that have library cards.
Yeah, other municipalities are at 40, and we were, I thought we were at 60, but we're even higher than that.
Yeah, we got a lot of people with library cards. Now, we got to get people to use them. Go to your library, check out a book.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on then. Personnel Committee, Chris?
Yep, right before this meeting, we had a Personnel Committee meeting, and we discussed our COVID policy moving forward. That will be on a future agenda item for the Board. And then we went and reviewed our staff reviews for the year. And outstanding job getting those reviews done for Todd and Lisa both, so appreciate that. That's what we discussed.
Okay, all right. Questions for Chris?
In a nutshell, we have a pretty outstanding staff, so we're pretty lucky.
Okay. All right, thank you. Our Director of Public Works, it looks like he's back in the office. Do you want to come up, sir, and give us an update?
He needs, had to run and do a quick well check. The fluoride scale is kind of funky after it gets refilled, so. You have to shake it a little bit and reset all the calculations and all that stuff.
Welcome, Mr. Todd Lord.
Hi, Todd Lord, Director of Public Works. I'm still catching my breath. I was running back and forth trying to get here as fast as I could. We're pretty much wrapping up the tree trimming thing around the village. We're like 95%. They're starting to do sets for where they want to put trees. They're checking spots, and then before they get the trees, I'll call Digger's Hotline and let them do their spotting for us. We're, did all the mower work, you know, we're probably going to be mowing grass in two weeks, right? We got the mowers, the mowers all done. We have a possibility at possibly selling that Chevy truck to Partyville. So MSA is helping us out with that. Still trying to get one of the farmers to maybe help me with that, with that application for the A-RIP program. The one over here on Hillside didn't want anything to do with it. Too much, too much personal information, and that's what I'm hearing, that's what I'm hearing throughout the, throughout the network on that, on the comments. Because farmers really don't, you know, and I don't blame them. I, you know, a lot of that information I looked at and I was kind of iffy about it. So, the yard is open. It's back to its regular hours. Tuesday, Tuesday through Thursday is basically, I get down there about 7:00 in the morning until, it's supposed to be 8:00 to 2:00, but I'm usually down there and have it open by 7:00. Open Friday, all day Friday and all day Saturday, and then it's locked up from Sunday to Monday. Haven't got the sign for it yet, so working on that. And that's it for now.
Questions for Todd?
How'd we do on last week's snowfall? The six-inch, everything okay there? Were there any problems?
What snow?
Yeah, okay, all right.
It worked out pretty good.
All right, because that was a Friday and...
Yeah, we didn't, didn't have to kill a lot of overtime to do that either, which was really nice.
When the gate is locked, how do the folks from Jefferson County get in there to look over their tower?
They have a combo. We gave them the combo to it. So they have access to that anytime they need it, because they have generator that runs in there and stuff like that, too.
So I got a call from Jefferson Police Department.
So did I. So did I. He goes, is that the right number? And I said, yes, it is.
All right, you're all over it, you're all over it.
Well, actually, he called me. He was all over it. He was kind of laughing as he did that. Anything else?
That's it. Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming by.
Okay, Village Office Updates. Lisa?
Audits and election has taken up a majority of our time. We've been very busy working with the auditors, gathering the... We've been very busy working with the auditors, gathering the information that they need. They did spend two days here last week. So those two days, for the most part, was get us this, we need this, show us these files. You know, so they have finished up their fieldwork. We're continuing to just finish up on some final requests that they're sending us for additional information. So they are finishing up their work on the audit, as well as the PSC report and the form C for the state. As you know, the election's next Tuesday. So a lot of the final notices have had to go out. We have poll worker training and the public test tomorrow. Absentee voting is in full swing. To date, we've had a hundred and ten absentee ballots either requested through the mail or people voting in person. The in-person voting goes through 5:00 PM this Friday. Next Monday, we'll be going to do the voting at the assisted living homes in town. State Workers Comp Audit was completed and sent in. We'll be talking a lot later in the agenda about working with elders on the financing. The PSC public hearing was today. So Brian will be providing information on that later in the agenda. Another, number of open records requests have been coming in. One in particular is very lengthy. As always, a number of ongoing projects. Tammy is working on finishing touches on the new website. So a lot going on.
How's the website looking?
Looking good. Just getting into the backend of it and getting some things updated. And we'll have some news out to you very, very soon.
Okay.
When do the email addresses change?
We'll get the website up and running and then probably shortly after that.
All right. Any other questions for Lisa?
Kind of, I'm not sure if it's relevant or not. But we had a question a few weeks ago about some of the code ordinances being updated. Is that part of the website process?
We will be sending in all the updated ordinances to MuniCode to get updated on the, on the website.
Thank you.
I just pulled it up.
Looks very nice.
Okay.
Picture on the front is one of our Public Works workers, Cody Garcia, took that picture.
Oh, that one? That's amazing. That's beautiful.
It's a rainbow.
Figure I'd like to feature just pictures from around town. When the weather gets a little nicer and gets greener, then I'll be taking some more photos myself.
Subscribe to receive updates. I love that. So, good. Nice. Be great.
Okay. All right, thank you, Lisa. Move right in then to Treasury's report. What do you want to start with, Tammy? Bills or the report itself?
The bills.
Bills? Okay.
So the first bill run was in the amount of sixty-three thousand, eight hundred, fifteen dollars and forty-seven cents. The second bill run in the amount of seventy-five thousand, nine hundred, fifteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. For a total of one hundred, thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred, thirty dollars and seventy-six cents. I'm saying that slow because I know Paula's writing it down.
All right, I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of one hundred, thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred, thirty dollars and seventy-six cents.
I'll sign.
Okay. Got a motion of second. Now it's time for discussion. Issues, questions on the bills?
Can you just look here? I got it.
Can you read them off?
Looks like we got bills over five thousand are Bowman Associates, Dean Health Plan, Stafford Rosenbaum, Village Deerfield. It's our Dane County Sheriff Contract, Associated Bank Bond Series, Compass Minerals, and Tree Works.
Any other questions on bills? All right. Roll call, please.
Trustee Franklin.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yes.
Colin Beck.
Yes.
Chris Blackwood.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. Treasurer's report. Anything else?
Just okay with what Lisa was saying. I've been working quite extensively on the audit. Between that, the website, it's pretty much taken my time the last two weeks.
Anybody have anything else? Okay. All right. We will-
Actually, I do have a question. The property insurance. We're at two hundred and fifty-five percent of budget. Do you know why we were off so much from that budgeting amount?
Are you looking at the budget comparison?
Yeah.
What is the account number?
Page four? Page four? Do you look at percent of budget? I always, at this point in the time, when I look at the budget comparison, I just look at percent of budget. And when I see something that's kind of that much of a discrepancy, it's insurance for properties is the line item?
Five, one, nine, three, zero.
Is it different accounts?
Five, one, oh.
If you, and I don't necessarily need an answer now, if you guys just want to take a look at that if you don't know where-
I think it was paid in through admin and has to be recoded, certain things toward library, toward Public Works, toward-
Got it. Okay, that makes perfect sense to me.
Yeah. So it just needs to be recoded.
All right. Super. I think that's the only one that, that really stood out to me. So thank you.
All right. Nothing else? We'll move on. Item eight A, park reservation. Cambridge Cap wants to, Carrie Murin. Lisa, you got this one?
Yep, they're just doing a community cleanup project. And they'd be starting in Veterans Park for the sign up and having a table there directing people where to go.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the park reservation for Cambridge Cap Community Cleanup Project.
I'll second.
Okay, Paula's second. Any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carrie's. Well, opposed? All righty. Item B. Brian, I have a feeling we're going to need you up here. Cambridge Resolution 2024-03, authorizing the issuance of four million, six hundred and thirty-three thousand, thirty dollars of a general obligation promissory note and the issuance and sale of a four million, six hundred and thirty-three thousand, thirty dollars note anticipation.
I do, I believe you all have our presentation materials in your packet. Thank you. So I am here for- Oh, yeah, sorry about that. So that packet will cover B, C, and D that I have on the agenda. I apologize if you've changed the agenda since, but I'm here for all three items. We'll take them in the order that they're presented here. So I would ask for this first item. This is the extension of interim financing for the well project. Essentially, when we issued that note, we issued it for fourteen months. And the PSC process to get that rate application in and go through the PSC process has taken longer than that. As Administrator Maine indicated, that we had the public hearing today for the PSC. They typically release their final judgment, which is called a final order, fourteen to twenty-eight days after that point. So the original interim financing was for May one of this year. With the public hearing today, we would look at a final decision towards the end of April. And you could basically try to implement the rates the day after as the only way to be able to kind of close on the loan. However, this, the state, the DNR, and the Department of Administration were unwilling to kind of go on that quick turnaround timeline for the loan. So therefore, we don't have the ability to pay off the first interim financing by May first. So essentially, we're extending this another three months with the anticipation. PSC final decision, end of April. Ability to close on the long-term financing late May, early June, and then pay off the interim financing. So I'll kind of walk through that on the extend interim financing slide. Again, that we're, basically, the state is not ready. The three state agencies involved, Public Service Commission, Department of Natural Resources, and Department of Administration are not ready to complete their processes. So the 2024 NAM that's in front of you tonight is to pay off the 23 NAM. And then there's cost of issuance in bond council and ourselves kind of negotiating this rate on your behalf in order to change that. And I'll kind of walk through that on the next pages. So the next pages of your packet are portrait. They go upright. This is the term sheet for Huntington to extend that note by three months. Essentially, though, think of it as a refinancing, not just an extension, because they're issuing this at a different interest rate. So they were unwilling to just kind of extend it, change those terms. It's, it's actually technically a refinancing, but in turn is an extension of that initial interim financing. So we've extended that, as you'll see here, to September thirtieth, only to give time. That, that is actually the last date you would have available to close the long-term financing. So no matter what, it's going to happen by then. We do feel this will happen by June. So in truth, you're probably paying less than sixty days' interest on this extension note itself. That interest rate, about the middle of this first page of the term sheet, is identified at four point nine one percent. I will get to our opinion on that rate and its fairness later, after we go through the remainder of the terms. But the big identification here is that basically, if you've not accepted Huntington's proposal, that obviously, if you were to come back to them, you know, this rate could change. You know, obviously, as markets change, they look at what their rates are. All of it would be due at final maturity or when you pay it off. The reason for that, again, if you do not remember the discussion in early 2023, is the long-term financing, the safe drinking water fund loan program, does not allow for interim interest payments to be reimbursed. So you'd have to pay that out of coffers, you know, cash on hand, in only to, in order to pay that back. So we always give the communities this flexibility by saying, we'll have everything due at the final maturity and prepayable at any time. So I think the biggest components of this is we're extending it. The interest rate is four point nine one percent. I'll provide my opinion on that in a little bit. It's prepayable at any time and everything's due at maturity. So any questions on the terms? Otherwise, I'll advance to the interest rate.
What's the interest rate right now?
The 2023 NAM was taken out at four point six percent. And I'll explain kind of their difference and then some comparables in other sales of typical transactions that we have. Any other questions on the terms before I advance technically two pages from where I'm at to the comments on the interest rate? Hearing none, I will do so. So now I'm on the slide that says extend interim financing after the term sheet. The first bullet point kind of says 2024 NAM comments. The other thing I should mention when we say NAM, this is a note, anticipation note. The reason you issue in that manner is so that it does not count against your GEO debt authority. So it's no different than the 2023 interim financing. And that we're not issuing on a revenue pledge saying, oh, yeah, we need revenues to cover a principal payment of four million dollars. Obviously, nobody really has that in existence. So you have to take it out on an anticipation basis. Basically, the pledge behind this is your anticipated future long-term takeout, which is your safe drinking water fund loan. So beyond that, the first bullet point kind of indicates the change in interest rates. So I identify that Huntington is offering four point nine one percent. The original NAM that was issued in 2023 was four point six percent. And then kind of looking at a yield curve from a Bloomberg source, that is an index of like AAA rated offerings. The one to two yield, one to two-year yield curve has moved up, right? This is kind of like a one-year note. Think about that. The other thing is typically, these notes will, and that yield curve will follow the U.S. Treasury trend. And you want to look at the yields for the certain maturity that you're identifying there. So the one-year U.S. Treasury trend, from the time you issued that original NAM, was four point six eight to now was five point oh six. So that's gone up by more than point three one percent. And they're offering something lower than what the Treasury has gone up. So kind of one indicator that it's a fair rate. If that would have been double the, you know, the Treasury trend, I would have been pushing a lot harder, you know, to say, this isn't fair, we got to lower this rate. The other item, you know, that I'll identify is we just did a very similar transaction with Huntington representing a double A rated community. And they issued that NAM at four point nine six percent. So we're right in ballpark of where that NAM was. I think the taxable nature of that ban, or that NAM, was the reason that there's a point zero five percent buffer here. But that's just kind of where the market is in terms of those maturities and these very open-ended terms that are provided with these maturities. So if there's no comments beyond that on the interest rate or the terms, we've just provided the sample language that Quarles would in terms of, you know, restating the resolution and your motion to approve. The other item that I'll point out is I will need to walk out if you do approve it with a signature on this from you, Mark. So.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Go ahead.
What are the fees associated with the finance? And if so, what are the total fees for the finance?
Sure. The total fees, Huntington offered no fees. Quarles and Brady, which is bond council. So I'm guessing they quote this on their time to create the resolutions and review the term sheet, which they did provide comments on the term sheet. They were at fifteen thousand. And then our fees, Ellers and Associates, was three thousand. Essentially, that's our time reviewing the interest rates, the terms, making sure that it's applicable to the long-term financing and appropriate for the village under our fiduciary duty. Our minimum fee for any transaction is seven thousand, five hundred. I, I just made it three thousand because, you know, this is very limited in terms of what we had to do. You already had a NAM recently taken out. So I literally tracked this as to how much I was doing the hourly work and then came to my number, you know, at, at the last minute so that I didn't overcharge anything like that. So that's how I arrived at the three thousand, was basically my hourly charges to take care of this transaction February through today.
So in summary, to refinance it, it's eighteen thousand dollars.
Eighteen thousand dollars. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your answer.
So, we're looking at, what's the repayment on this one, twenty years?
No, just, it's, it's essentially like three months. Yeah, and then every, any principal and interest is due at the time that you pay it. So, if you prepay it, whenever that Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan is due, we're going to pay it on that closing date. You know, when, when the state's ready to close that loan, you're going to pay this off, and then it'll be the Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan, that's the long-term takeout. So, this, technically, the maturity is, you know, five months, six months to September thirtieth of this year.
And to reiterate, the reason we need to do this is because the PSC process that they had to go through took longer than what we were originally told slash anticipated.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that eighteen thousand dollars, is that financed into something then, or is that something the village board has to come up with separately outside of this financing?
It's included in the principal.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of the four million six hundred and thirty-three thousand thirty-dollar general obligation promissory notes and the issuance and sale of the four million six hundred and thirty-three thousand thirty-note anticipatory note, series 2024A, in anticipation there.
One second.
Okay. Further questions, concerns, issues? Anybody?
It's unfortunate that our original timeline has not been met, but there's really nothing we can do about it.
Correct. You have a payment due on May one.
Yeah, and we, we don't have that money laying around, so I guess we'll have to do this.
Right.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Whitmore.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Krist Blackwood.
Yes.
Brineig.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right, let's move on to item C, which is discussion, possible action on the selection of a loan term for the 2024 Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan presentation by Ellers.
Yep, so that is the next page in the slide deck, or page seven. The start of that discussion, that slide is labeled SDWFL, or Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan Term Option. So, these Safe Drinking Water Fund Loans, which is the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Environmental Improvement Fund Loan Program, which is designated for water utility improvements that are eligible, they are eligible for fifty-five percent of market interest costs to the communities that qualify. Some communities, based off of their demographics, also qualify for principal forgiveness, which is essentially grant money. As we discussed in twenty-two through twenty-three, we were not able to qualify for that grant money. I believe the engineers also sought out other grant programs, and, you know, didn't qualify there when we reviewed the funding options in late 2023 in terms of open market revenue bonds or this loan program. The open market revenue bonds come with not only the higher interest rate, but a higher coverage requirement, therefore exceeding the minimum required revenues in order to secure the funding. Your coverage requirement in the open market would be a dollar and twenty-five cents in revenues available for debt service, and for every dollar of debt service. In the Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan Program, it was one-ten coverage, a dollar and ten cents for every dollar of debt coverage. So, we did make a decision last year to move forward with this program, both based off of the interest rate and, which would mean lower debt service, and the lower coverage requirement, meaning we don't have to increase revenues as much. And now, as we get closer to completing the loan paperwork with the state, now that the wheels are in motion, PSC, DOA, DNR, we have the option, because your aggregated design life, based on the project costs, that does not include engineering expenses. Of course, we do not provide a design life for our engineers. It's a joke. But they do, just based off of the hard costs, what is the average, you know, term of this design life for the project? That came to thirty-four point eight-two years. That is a requirement of this program to do that calculation. Because it's over thirty years, this program does offer a term greater than twenty, which in the open market, you could really only get twenty. It's hard to get an underwriter to underwrite anything over than that. But the state program does offer up to thirty years, as long as you qualify. This is your announcement, you qualify. So, we wanted to run some scenarios to you to provide anything greater than a twenty-year term, kind of what does it look like? Understand, the, the selection is not twenty, twenty-five, or thirty, as listed here. It can be anything twenty or greater, it can be less than twenty. We're, we're going to have further financial pressures if it's less than twenty, because we've kind of talked about minimum twenty at this point through all of our planning runs. So, you know, it's kind of a discussion, do we want to go greater than twenty years, and at what, what term? So, the interest rate does change, as identified on this slide. Anything over twenty years and up to thirty comes with what amounts to basically point one-one percent higher interest rate. So, looking at the principal or your total project costs, a twenty-year term at two point one-four-five percent, your annual average principal and interest, and this is pretty much level debt service, it slightly decreases each year, but your average annual principal and interest payment will be three hundred and three thousand nine, nine hundred twenty-three dollars. Your twenty-five-year term, slightly higher interest rate, as I indicated, at two point two-five-five percent. Annual PNI is two hundred fifty-five thousand eight sixty-one. And a thirty-year term that continues to go down, of course, two hundred twenty-two thousand seven sixty-three, in terms of the annual PNI on that. Again, if you were like, can we do twenty-seven years? Somewhere in, in between the twenty-five section and the, and the thirty section, I only have so much, you know, pieces of paper to kind of identify that, but just understand, you don't have to make one of those selections, it can be something in the middle. And as well as, if there would be something else that you would like to see, this decision does not have to be made tonight. We could bring it back to another board meeting. The next slide for this term option, the final slide for this agenda item, just to kind of say, all right, what about the assets that are less than thirty years? You know, how long would it take us to amortize those assets so we don't have debt outstanding for something, you know, a portion of this project that's going to retire within the thirty years? So, based on the design life indicated for each asset cost category, approximately six hundred thousand of your total hard costs, which is about four point seven million. For less than twenty-year life, under the thirty-year term, this would be amortized within six years. For any of the costs that are less than thirty years, which is approximately one point three-three million of the total hard costs of four point seven, that would be amortized within ten years. So, meaning, you can allocate the debt service however you want, but if we were to say, we're paying off the shortest life items first, you would be doing so before it fully amortizes. Under anything that's, you know, less than the thirty-year life would be amortized within ten years. Anything less than twenty years would be amortizing within six years. This is to say, you wouldn't have a duplicative issuance outstanding if you needed to issue debt for a mechanical part that only lasts ten years. This is a, and then beyond that, the bullet point that I wanted to provide, again, you could not get this in other, you know, in the open market or negotiating with an underwriter. Typically, you're looking at twenty years for revenue debt, revenue secured debt. Ellers would recommend the longer term, thirty years, in order to allow for greater flexibility for delaying any future water rate adjustments, right? The lower your annual PNI payment, the greater flexibility you have to fit in future projects, if there are future projects. We didn't have any large projects on the ten-year long-range cash flow that we provided, but if some other mandate comes up or some other need arises in the village, extending that debt service, one, you're not going to have an issue with issuing something for an asset life that you're going beyond its design life. Two, you would lower your annual debt service payments in an effort to be able to provide longer fiscal sustainability based off of flat revenues. So, lowering that debt payment provides that capacity. So, if you'd like, I can take questions on this. Again, I just wanted to reiterate, the action on this is not needed now. It would be needed probably by May first, because once those rates are in place, we want to close on that loan as quickly as possible, so we don't have extra interest costs on the NAN, right? So, again, I understand that this is the first time you're seeing kind of the, the loan options based off of the design life calculation, now that we have numbers pretty much finalized. So, again, if we wanted to come back in April, you could, but our Ellers recommendation will not change, you know, we want that greater flexibility for future rate adjustments.
Okay. So, we could hold off until May. Let's start with that. Do we want to make a decision tonight? Do we feel like we need more time to consider all this? One of our trustees is not here this evening. I don't know if that'll make a difference or not.
Because somebody might not, one of our trustees might not be at the next meeting. So, I think that a trustee's not here shouldn't be a consideration.
I'll make a motion to direct Ellers and village staff to work with the state on a thirty-year term for the 2024 Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan.
One second.
More flexibility, low PNI, just like you said, I think it's our best bet.
I do, too.
Okay.
Take a longer than thirty?
No, the program only allows up to thirty years. It's a very good question, if you're doing a pipe project, right? Pipe can last fifty years. So, we do get that. I've had one community say, we've made pipe last a hundred years, can we get a hundred-year loan? Unfortunately, none of the state programs around the country will allow for greater than thirty is typically what you'll see for these utility projects. And they kind of create standards, because this is a federally funded program within the state, so.
Okay. Other questions? All right, I'll ask for the matter to, to have a roll call here.
She has a question.
Oh.
Oh, you can vote, but can I still ask a question after your vote? It's not going to influence your vote, I just have a question.
Go ahead and ask you a question, may, I don't know if it.
You need a dumb question, but what is the life expectancy of the other well? Or is there not a life, I don't know anything about wells, like these kind of big wells.
I'm not your engineer, I don't know that answer.
I guess my concern is, is like, five, seven years from now, we really go, oh crap, now we need another well.
Yep.
We're not discussing that right now.
So, when does that get discussed?
We need to stick to the agenda item, and this is the financing item on this particular well, but we can take feedback for future agenda items.
Okay. I do have a question about financing. What, what were the reasons for other grants being, are being denied or not being able to get other grants?
We did receive one grant for fluoride equipment through the state. A lot of the other grants that were looked at, we did not qualify because we have too high of a annual income per capita in the village, so we didn't meet the requirements for other grants that were looked at.
This does relate to the financing, I just have a question, clarification. So, if they close this loan, this NAN loan sooner than May first, they could prepay this short-term loan and lock into a lower rate a month sooner if they're acting now?
Correct.
And this loan can only be used for the construction of the well?
Correct.
And how if we started construction already on the well, but we haven't secured it?
The, I, I can answer that. The, the loan program has a fiscal year cycle. The engineer, it's, it's a technical exercise to see whether or not you're eligible for it, and you have to apply to that program. The engineer's applied for a state fiscal year 2024. So, we, we're in the fiscal year, which is July one through June thirty of this program, of June thirty of 2024. So, you have to organize your stuff within that time. The item that we're only waiting on is the PSC rate adjustment to give the ability to have the revenues in place to secure funding for the loan. So, the state will not issue the loan until the PSC approves, and we'll kind of get to this later, the minimum adjustment, which we talked about in the public hearing as well today, was forty-three percent. The state says you can't close this loan until you have an adjustment of forty-three percent of revenues. We recommended going for something a little higher, the PSC landed, we'll get to that agenda item, but we're waiting on the PSC.
That's because it all started in 2023, correct? Right, the whole process? Like the loans?
The application, everything like that, correct? I believe that's when the engineer.
So, in the future, the village residents could just get communication of something like that, that big, sent out? I, I think that's something that would get sent in the mail for communication.
Okay. We're going to get back here to the financing. All right, we've got a motion, and we've got a second. I'm going to ask for the matter to be called to vote. Roll call, please.
Trustee Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Krist Blackwood.
Yes.
Brineig.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitmore.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? On the call today, I don't know who was speaking, but they said something about P Birch having a debt ratio of seventy-six percent, and it didn't sound like, like something was going to be approved because of that. And I don't know if I misunderstood what they were talking about. They said you had equity of twenty-three percent and a debt ratio of seventy-six percent. Does anybody recall that on the phone?
I, I can answer that. So, they'll take, the PSC said that, and they'll take your total assets, the value of the assets in service, and they'll say, what was the funding source of each of those? Because this project is being almost a hundred percent funded by debt, and because this project, I believe, I, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe doubled the value of the system, automatically their debt to equity is going to be fifty percent the second this loan comes on. So, the current running standard is actually twenty-five percent, you know, debt to equity. But because we have such a large project that's coming on, right, day one of that, they're going to have now fifty percent of that added, because the total value's doubling, and it's almost a hundred percent being funded by debt, because we don't have four million dollars of cash, and we don't have grants available to pay for that.
And no one's concerned about that? Or is that not an issue? I guess I want that to be quite striking when they make those.
It's, it's typical in this inflationary environment, just with the large projects.
Ryan, can you clarify that, that's Ellers setting, not Ellers, the PSC setting those ratios, the percentages?
Correct. That's the PSC comments on that, to which when she said that, she did fail to mention it's due to a large project. I have communities that automatically switch to ninety percent, because they have a ten-million-dollar treatment facility that they're funding with debt that quadruples their system value. Day one of that, if that's a hundred percent funded by debt, right, now your system value is so small, but then it significantly changes, and a hundred percent of that was debt. So, it's, it, that, that's just kind of where I'll leave that.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Okay, that takes care of item C. Now we're into D, discussion and update of the PSC water rate case. Ryan?
Yep, so the beginning of this starts on slide nine. The title of it is PSC Water Rate Case Update. So the first item is that I wanted to remind the board from December 12th board meeting when we made the presentation to file the rate adjustment based off of our adjustments and understanding the components at hand. So this first section is just to kind of remember what we presented then. Your required minimum adjustment to close on the Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan was forty-three percent. Again, that's set by the DOA Capital Finance Office, who is the financial arm of this DNR loan program. So in order to close the loan, the minimum adjustment needed was a forty-three percent adjustment. As I identify here, just getting that minimum does not provide future flexibility. You know, as an enterprise fund, operating maintenance expenses can be quite volatile, main breaks, well rehabs, other items like that. You have operating expenditures that change, of course, and other inflationary pressures as cost of materials, wages, and other things may need to change as well. So if you solve for the minimum, you're likely going to have to do another adjustment immediately after. So what we requested to the PSC, as shown in the third sub-bullet, is an adjustment that was supported by the LERS long-range cash flow of a forty-nine percent adjustment. If you remember, the mechanics to do that is to try to change the PSC math from their benchmark rate of return. They benchmark all utilities to a certain percent of invested capital that their rates recover on an annual basis, a certain percentage of that. So if your, you know, value's one million dollars in your system and they have a ten percent rate of return, you know, you have to earn a hundred thousand dollars in order to get to, you know, on an annual basis. They obviously make you recover depreciation and O and M as well. But it was our recommendation and we filed it, and your decision to file the application at the forty-nine percent, the MAC, the Current Benchmark Rate of Return for the PSC, if we would have just filed, let the application regurgitate what it is, would have been an eighty-eight percent rate revenue adjustment. So again, we were seeking something about half, a little over half of what the, at that time, full benchmark rate of return would have yielded. We're here to tell you tonight that the PSC decided on a sixty-six percent adjustment to rate revenues. Understand that affects customer classes differently, which we'll get to on the next slide, but they landed on a sixty-six percent rate of return, or, excuse me, rate revenue adjustment. I'll discuss how we got there. So we suggested something that was lower than their benchmark. They also have comfort thresholds, as I've been described by PSC staff and their audit team, to which that comfort threshold, in this case, for the utility was a four-point-nine percent rate of return. After all of their adjustments, and this is, you know, publicly on the PSC's website, their revenue requirement at a four-point-nine percent rate of return comes in at that sixty-six percent need to adjust rate revenues. So they basically said, we won't go any lower than a four-point-nine percent rate of return, even though we know you requested and proved that you can be financially viable at a lower amount. They think differently. So that's how they landed on their sixty-six percent at a four-point-nine. The primary driver there is a four-point-nine percent rate of return. Next slide identifies what the sixty-six percent rate revenue adjustment means for various customer classes. The calculation on how they get there is about fifty pages long in their Cost of Service and Rate Design exhibit. I will try to simplify that to one simple explanation. Each customer class, so residential, commercial, industrial, uses water differently. The water cost of service and rate design is built off of max day demand and max hour demand, meaning what's going to cause, you know, pumping expenses to spike, what's going to cause other operation expenses to spike, it's when you really need to use water. An industrial user using flat-line water, let's just say it's just for bathrooms, but they're running three shifts, right? They're going to run pretty similarly throughout the day, so their demand ratio is typically one. The residential class as a whole, who uses water in the morning, you know, when we're showering, getting ready, and then at night, we're washing clothes and, you know, getting the kids baths, everything like that, we spike the system on a max hour basis. So you'll tend to see a demand ratio of like one-point-four for the residential class. So they essentially come up with cost causation methodology, and again, this is a PSC doing this, and they identify the residential class for the Village of Cambridge is impacting the cost causation a little higher than other customer classes. So in certain instances, you can see commercials also affected here as well. So they've arrived at, you know, sixty-six overall rate revenue adjustment will actually impact residential users, then I'll use the average residential at sixty-nine percent. So there is a full fifty-page, greater than that, kind of table by table. I can explain that to anybody in their free time. It does typically take me about an hour to walk through that explanation, to which I tried to work down five minutes. But understand that they have those tables there to identify what the cost causation is of each customer class. Typically, you will see this result because of the max hour explanation, that residential classes will get a little bit of a bump above the rate revenue adjustment of sixty-six percent, right? The average residential user at a certain usage threshold is going to have slightly higher than that sixty-six percent. So wanted to provide that clarification there, but that is right now where the PSC decision is staff decision. We held the public hearing today. I do commend your residents for attending the hearing. The PSC unfortunately scheduled these during the day, which we all work. It's hard to attend those hearings when they're during the day. Typically, I see no public involvement, and that goes for some rate adjustments that are greater than a hundred percent, and one that we've seen that was two-hundred-and-eleven percent, and we had no one attend. So I will say, I was glad to see, I think they're asking the very good questions. The last thing that I'll indicate is, just so you can know the results of that in terms of some of the comments made, but a lot of it was, you know, continuing public knowledge were a lot of the comments made. So there, I'll just say, the process that was followed was statutory at minimum, of course, you have to do, that was the customer notice that went out. That went out when the PSC provides it, so you followed state statute in that manner. The other thing that I'll remind the board is that we spoke about this at several board meetings, one in December, one in October, and then with the Utility Commission, just on the financing of this project, not the project need or any of the engineering items, just the financing that I'm speaking to. The first meeting with the Utility Commission, starting in June of 2022, is my first deliverable to them. We then held several meetings in 2022. April 18th of 2023, we held a public information session at the Utility Commission meeting, which was notice on the April water and sewer bills there. So there was deliverables and a notice as well there. So some communities only rely on the statutory process, which would have just been the customer notice at the eleventh hour. I've made the recommendation to PSC staff that that customer notice should be required to be filed when the application is filed. I think that makes way more sense. Their argument is, we make a ton of changes and it can send mixed signals. I disagree. I think they should have a statutory process in place that mandates earlier notices. We held a board meeting to discuss the filing of the application, to discuss it in a public forum, December 12th, 2023. LERS filed the application after getting approval from you, I believe, three days later, because I think we filed it on Friday, on the fifteenth, if I remember correctly. So that was kind of the process today. There were other questions about project need, not your engineer, I'm going to have to rely on someone else for that. But in terms of that, you know, administrator, you know, Lisa can speak to, you know, how you guys want to follow up on those items, you know, in terms of public engagement beyond this point. But those were the primary things. I guess, Lisa, any other comments that you wanted to emphasize?
No, I know the board had discussed in the past, do we send out notices sooner or not, or later, wait until, and the board had decided, let's wait until we get a final number from PSC. If we would have gone out with a forty-eight percent increase, because that's what we were hoping for, and then all of a sudden, PSC comes back with, you know, a sixty-six, sixty-nine percent. So at the time, it was the board's decision, let's wait until we have firm numbers from the PSC, because we didn't know what it would end up being. You know, so, you know, I know there were questions, clarifications, you know, the fifteen, twenty-year, the fifteen-year was the first year, so it was twenty, or 2009, when our then engineers, Town and Country, submitted plans to the DNR for the well. It was in discussion for numerous, you know, for years before we have to start looking at this, it was in 2009 when the full plans were submitted to the DNR. The board at that time decided, we're not going to go ahead, we're going to wait. It was in 2020, the DNR report did say, yep, you have to start looking at this. So back in 2020, looking back, that's when we started deciding, do we stay with the Town and Country plans? At the time, we had new engineers with MSA. It was decided, let's kind of scrap the twenty-nine, 2009 plans are outdated. MSA then started working with the new plans. So it has been a progression. Like you said, in 2022, then, we started talking the financing and how we're going to move forward and applying for the different grants for, you know, our interim financing and so forth, with bids going out at the end of 2022, authorized the beginning of 2023 construction. I just saw, we just got our week forty-one update, you know, so the construction's been going on for almost a year now.
But I think it's important to note, Lisa, that it evolved into a mandate.
Yes, yes. So in 2020, we knew the mandate was coming, we started working on it. The mandate in 2022 was, yep, this has to be up and functional in 2024. So I can go back and find the state reports that we get from the DNR.
Can you find the reports from 2009 as well?
I don't know that, I, you know.
We also need to just make sure, you're welcome to provide feedback, especially during the public comment about things for the board to take up. What we don't want to do is start making open.
No, I understand, this is just regarding.
Of, you know, during the.
Totally understand. Question for you, when did the PSI decide on the sixty-six percent? Was that after the PSI, or PSC meeting tonight?
No, they decide on that in the revenue requirement, which was issued in mid-February or late February, I'm forgetting the date off the top of my head, but that sixty-six percent was decided with their revenue requirement exhibit.
And then they have the.
Public hearing after the Cost of Service Study, which follows the revenue requirement.
But it's already done at that.
It goes into the hands now of the division administrator, who will look at PSC staff's recommendation and our recommendation. I can tell you, in my experience doing ten of these a year for communities that I serve across the state, they've never gone differently than the PSC staff recommendation.
Okay. I don't bother you with any questions anymore, but I would like to talk with someone aside about some other things. And how do I do that as a resident?
Call the village office, go visit the village office.
So I can come down and, can I schedule a meeting? Because it's going to take longer than five minutes. I'm going to need reports, so do I email someone on what I need?
Yeah, send me a list of what you'd like, we can see what we can get with, understanding that we have things like the election coming up and, you know, it, I can't drop everything and, you know, I know we've talked and I started pulling out some things, looking back at the history.
So, so earlier this year, didn't we also, on our bills, have a note that said there was going to be a significant water increase? It didn't, it didn't, I know it, it didn't say a percentage, but I thought we used the word significant in that line item on the bills. It was either January or February's water bill that that came out on. We did try to do a heads up.
And I think part of that was when we did the previous simplified rate case notification, that we did the simplified rate case in an effort to.
Eat into the.
To reduce the larger rate and to show PSC our desire to, you know, all steps in our desire to get a lower rate now. So I think when the simplified rate case was done, it was noted that in an effort to reduce.
We're doing this now, but there's going to be a more significant increase in the future as well.
Yeah.
Because I remember my husband pointing it out to me on our bills, which is why I.
I think that was in February, and I think it was an eight percent increase.
To some of those questions, we use an external company sends out our bills for us. They sent the letter to every address that they have on file that receives bills. Vicky pulled up today the date, the confirmation that we sent out seven-hundred-fifty letters on this date. So they have the list of all the utility customers, they send the bills out every month, and that's who the letter was sent to.
No, like I said, this is my first time here, I'm here to educate myself, so thank you for answering the questions.
Yeah.
I wonder, does the PSC SI need like an ORF number so that it's easy for members of the public to just go into a docket like somebody?
They, yeah. They went through that on the public hearing, but I can provide that docket number as well.
It was on the letter two.
It was, yeah. I know it's nine-two-zero WR, I just don't know one-oh what, I believe it's one-oh-six, but I can send that to the.
One-oh-three, yeah.
One-oh-three?
You think one-oh-four?
Yeah, but anyway, I can send that to you to disseminate again, but it was on the customer notice. The administrative law judge went through the process of how to click through their website to find it. It's not easy, I'll admit, but that's where the publicly filed documents from application to data requests to, you know, the revenue requirement and everything like that kind of comes out.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that as a, as a sort of a clearinghouse that the PSC maintains of all the, all the files associated with this to help.
Yeah, I've looked at it, I've gone through all of them.
And the construction, when it has a large project attached to it, it usually has a construction authorization, which this one does, and that's a different docket number, but those are informative. I especially like the final order because it talks about the alternatives that were identified and, you know, kind of where the PSC relied their decision-making process on to give them authorization to construct the project, so. But that's another, you know, just not focusing on the rate case docket.
I'm looking at it right now, it says, it's PSC docket nine-two-zero-dash-WR-dash-one-zero-four.
Tammy Williams.
I was just on it earlier, the YouTube link, I'd like to put it on the website.
Yeah.
And Brian, this, I'm just going to recap what I, pretty much I understand here. An average residential, I'm looking at your, average residential with a five-eighths main, three thousand gallons a month, we're looking, at the old rate was thirty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents, and the new rate will be sixty-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Correct.
And that is almost a seventy percent increase. And that is almost a 70% increase.
Correct.
And one clarification that was made today too. Realizing this just affects water rates, not the sewer rates. I know some residents, you know, are looking at their whole rates bill saying, you know, I'm going from $30 to, you know, the whole bill. It's like, no, it's just the water rate that is increasing, not the, not the sewer.
Okay. Uh, there's no, no other action needed, right, at this time?
No, it's, like I said in December, upon filing the rate case, it's truly in the PSC's hands at that point. Their audit staff takes over, they release their kind of decision, goes to public hearing to hear public comment, and now it'll be in the administrator's hand to make the final decision, which I would expect for, somewhere within 14 to 28 days from now.
Okay. All righty, any other questions for Brian?
Once that occurs, we did discuss, we'll line it up to begin with our billing cycle, so that we don't have a bill that's half the old, half the new. It will be concurrent with our billing cycle.
Okay, Brian, thank you for coming by.
Thank you, I do need.
Thank you.
You to sign this before I walk out.
Okay. All right, uh, let's move on to unfinished business, Fire Commission update.
Can I add one more question about the water sewer?
Go ahead, ma'am.
On the phone today, I had a question, when the DNR loan for the sewer she was planning would be paid off, and the gentleman from finance said, part of it in 2025, part of it in 2026. And I guess my question is, once that loan is paid off, is there any way that we could move that money that's been to the, to give some people relief on the water bill? I mean, is there any intention of what you're gonna do with that money once those loans are paid off? That could help people off by paying down the debt?
We might want to have a separate agenda item to discuss this.
And like I, it was discussed today too, we're part of a commission, so the commission dictates the rates and, and so forth for the sewer. So we don't have a direct say in what the sewer rates are. It's, we are part of the commission. So if that facility is 25 years old, are they starting to do repairs? And like they mentioned today, the inflation and so forth, you know. So that would be a discussion for the Cambridge Oakland Wastewater Commission.
No, one more question, sorry, last one. Do we have any lead rights still in the village that have to do with sewer?
So it would definitely be something we could put on a future agenda item for discussion. We wanna, we just have to make sure we stick to the agenda, which is the financing, but, but.
For the water and sewer.
Water and sewer committee could.
But I, I believe that the PSC report that we do not have any lead remaining, I believe. I don't quote me, but. Yeah, yep, and we do have a form to fill out. You know, a lot of the water and sewer things may go to the Water and Sewer Committee first for discussion before coming to the full board and so forth, but.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Uh, Brian, thank you for coming by. 9A, Fire Commission update. Chris, what, what is happening?
Latest update is after trying without success to have a meeting. We finally have one posted for the 28th. I believe it's gonna be in Oakland. For a Fire Commission meeting, the agenda is posted right out here, it's quite extensive. But that's pretty much what I have for an update right now.
6:30?
I believe so, 6:30?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, okay, thank you.
6:00 PM at Oakland?
Mm-hmm.
And where's the agenda for this?
Posted right outside the door.
Okay.
Should be emailed out.
Okay. And anything else then?
Any questions for me?
I guess it's important to note, it is an agenda that was a meeting requested by two members. So do we know if a full quorum will be there? We don't know, but, yeah.
Yeah, I guess we hope that the entire entirety of the commission will be there. I know that there's been some email pushback on, has this been, you know, has it been two people that want this meeting? And obviously, there are two people that want it, Sheila and myself, as well as Alicia, I believe. So, so we're gonna go forward with it. I mean, we need to do something, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
So if we get there, and it's just Sheila and myself, then I'll have to say what I said last time, which is, we don't have a quorum, and unfortunately, we will have to postpone the meeting to a future date. But as it stands right now, the, the commission lawyer knows the date. He's reviewed the, the agenda and a, and a, you know, the cursory look of the agenda, and he will be there. So I'm hoping that it's a fruitful meeting, and, and then that kind of ties into our agenda item 9 Bravo here, which is payment of second quarter dues. It would probably be my recommendation to wait until after that meeting, to see what happens before we make that decision. But I'll leave that up to you, discuss that.
Okay, all right, so we're into the payment of the second quarter dues. What's the recap on this one, Lisa?
When the first quarter came, the village board sent the first quarter with a letter to the commission saying, we will pay the first quarter, we will not pay the second quarter until we have an approved budget from the Fire Commission. I don't believe the commission has met since then.
Sheila, we don't have an approved budget right now, correct?
Well, it's, it's not approved because the municipalities did not approve it. We voted to send it to the municipalities in September.
Correct.
But the budget.
Failed in three municipalities.
And the commission has not met to update it or change it since then.
To make some changes on Thursday.
And for the audience, this is Sheila Palinkas, she's the Secretary Treasurer of the Fire and EMS Commission, so.
And I believe one of our, was arbitration, and they were waiting for their lawyer to get up to speed. There hasn't been any, no, we, we do have a pending.
Done by April 1st, wasn't it? So, yeah. And that's why we've been pushing to have it before April 1st. Unfortunately, last week, I had done it, so. We are prepared to talk about it and hopefully deal with it on Thursday, so.
Sheila, what's the town of Oakland going to be doing with respect to this issue?
What are we going to be doing when?
The town of Oakland?
Yeah.
Are you paying your second quarter, the town?
Not yet, no. We're waiting to see what happens.
Had you paid the first quarter? Had Oakland paid the, paid the first, but not the second? So similar.
And when is that second quarter due, technically?
Second quarter doesn't start till April, so.
According to the IBA, we have 60 days to pay. The invoices were sent out two weeks early, because we were in danger of running out of money. So I believe that Chris Vienna, well, I know Chris Vienna paid already. I believe that Lake Mills paid, I'm waiting for someone to confirm for me while I was gone. There was a deposit made, but no one told me what it was for. I'm assuming that it's from Lake Mills, but I'm waiting for confirmation of that as well. And we did receive the Rockdale payment in mail this, this week, so. Cambridge and Oakland are the two that have not paid yet. Technically, there are 60 days, according to the actually. We have about $97,000 in bank at the moment, in a operating account. $70,000 in savings accounts here in that, that debate. There's still $37,000 in Deerfield that is supposed to be moved over here, and about $2,800 at May 1st, which is also supposed to be moved over here. But I'm looking to help with that, because I am not on my signature card for Deerfield yet. Hopefully, we can get something out of this.
Yeah. All right, any other questions?
I, I think we should wait to pay until the commission meets and quorum, they can discuss these things and get, get it resolved.
I mean, we, we gave them notice, we said that was going to be our stance. I think if we go back on that now, then, you know, what does our, what does our word mean?
Yeah.
And if there are three people there, then two of you can, can vote.
We'll have a quorum.
Will, will be a majority vote of the quorum.
You'll have quorum, yep, yep.
So.
Oh yeah, and two would be a majority. Yeah.
And I wanted to lend some clarification from a couple of board meetings ago. It was brought to my attention from a, an agenda item from a Fire Commission meeting that, that, you know, we in fact, quote unquote, approved the budget for the Fire and EMS Commission. What was approved, just to provide clarity, was that we were going to present it to our municipalities. That's what was approved, not, we're approving the budget, because we don't have that. We don't have that capability of doing that. We can present it to our municipalities and say, okay, here's what, here's what we have. And as you can see, the three municipalities didn't, didn't care for that, so. But I just wanted to provide some clarity to that, to, to the misnomer that, that we approved the budget within the commission. That's not true.
Do you have enough cash, Sheila, to be, to? Yeah, to expect that you can meet your payroll obligation while this second quarter dues thing is, you know, in abeyance?
Mostly.
Most likely.
Yeah, we've got $70,000 savings right now. We do have a $66,000 tire truck payment coming up on April 15th, so, you know, well, if, if they aren't made before April 15th, then it's a little different to the savings to do that, but. We won't be in danger of not paying. It'll get us.
Are, are all, are all, are all payments out of all accounts now being done through you slash the commission?
No, I've noticed some still coming out. I've got a long list of questions and clarifications that I will send out later tonight to have before the meeting or at the meeting. So, but there are still some, some things, you know, things being spent. You know, we, I, I, in the list is also a list of all the automatic pay things.
Sure.
We have a lot better control than we did before, but, you know, it's not, it's not 100%, not yet.
Yeah, there's actually an agenda item that we just placed on there about essential.
Is that non-essential?
Non-essential spending. It is an agenda item that we brought, we brought up for the 28th, because we're getting, you know, cable bills from Lake Mills and, and, you know, Amazon, you know, all these expenditures that are non-essential kind of expenditures that we can't seem to lasso, so.
Why would we have cable in Lake Mills? That's ridiculous.
Probably a new station.
Okay.
Antunes.
All right, so, yeah.
I have to go to sleep.
Yeah, Chuck had indicated he was gonna be leaving here around 8:15.
Do you want to make that motion then, the second payment? Yeah, make a motion that we delay second, payment of second quarter dues until the Fire Commission beats, and we resolve the issues in the agenda for the 28th.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, let's vote on that. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Caris.
Thank you, Chuck.
Hi, Chuck.
All right. Be safe.
Okay, uh, we're gonna move on to item 10A, Cambridge Foundation. We have a letter here from the Cambridge Foundation following up, and Lisa, it looks like they're going to provide us with $40,000 for flooring here at the Amundsen Center, and $5,694 for electricity out at the Cambridge Way site, and then 2610, 2,610 for landscaping at the Amundsen, right outside. Okay, so we are definitely appreciative of this.
That's fantastic.
Do we, can we write a thank you letter and then maybe sign this all together next time?
Yep.
All right, okay. Questions, referrals to staff, or future agenda items? Anything?
Have, have we gotten anywhere with the welcome signs?
Yeah, I did my.
Yes, with QuickTrip.
We do have an easement with QuickTrip.
Okay.
Um, I don't know that we want to put the signs there until they start, you know, before they start building. Um, I have reached out to the new manager of the country club, I have not heard back from them.
Speak a little economic development, we discussed that during that meeting. And one of the members was going to reach out to the country club personally, and see what we can do on that end of time.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Okay, anything else for future agenda items? Okay, upcoming meetings, April 2nd is the elections. Now, if you haven't, it would be a good day to get out. April 8th, economic development, as well as the plan commission. April 9th is the village board, and public works to be determined. Brings us to item 13 on the agenda.
I'll make a, sorry. I'll make a motion to convene into closed session per 19.851 echo.